The, whatever day, April 2nd, 2025, West Melbourne City Council meeting to order. Please stand with me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. Sorry about that, Megan. It's nice that we're all trained to stand there for the moment of silence as I didn't announce that, so I'm glad we all know to do that. Welcome everyone to tonight's meeting of the city council. Members of the public are welcome to speak on any topic, whether it is on tonight's agenda or on any issue that is important to you. Each person that wishes to speak should complete a speaker card, which are located near the glass doors, and submit it ahead of time to the city clerk. After you have been recognized to speak, please use the microphone at the podium and clearly state your name and address for the record. Please address all your comments to the city council rather than individual members. Direct all questions to the chair. Speakers will be given up to three minutes. All right, thank you. Our first item, the introduction of the new employee, we're not going to do that, we'll do that at another time. We're going to go to the modification of the agenda, Mr. Frampton.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a modification and move the consent agenda above public hearings because there's some corrections want to make to the minutes that might affect.
All right, anyone have an issue with moving? Yes, yeah, I don't think so, I don't see any objections, all right.
And Megan, if you'd read the correction to the minutes, please.
Yes, I'll read the paragraph as you modified it. That's March 18th minutes?
Yeah, okay.
Page six.
Figure out what was changed to.
At the top.
What number?
Um, I don't have your, it's consent agenda.
Scared me.
Item seven.
You scared me more than it did.
It's Ron DeSantis.
Just consent agenda, it's page six, it's the motion at the top, so it's in italics.
Seven A dash six.
Seven A dash six, there you go. So it would read, Councilmember Frampton moved to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2025 dash zero one, rezoning forty point six plus minus acres of property located on the northeast corner and southeast corner of Hollywood Boulevard and Eber Boulevard from RA, residential agriculture, to C1A, professional offices and services, to be consistent with the commercial future land use designation, including a time limit of six months for the applicant to address the two north and south properties not included with the survey, consistent with the north and south residential property. He added that if the property eventually applies the Live Local Act, council directs the city to ask for the impact fee inland rather than dollars. Councilmember Vols seconded the motion. If anyone would like, I can say specifically what was added and deleted.
Yes, could you do that?
Certainly. If you look at the line that begins with address, the word address, so it would be address the two north and south properties, comma, not included with the survey, comma, and this is the insertion, consistent with the north and south residential properties. And then the second change is in the following sentence there, where it says he added that if the property applies the Live Local Act, comma, instead of he would desire, it reads council directs the city to ask for the impact fee inland rather than dollars.
That was the intent of the motion, and I know we kind of went back and forth, and so when I, when I read it, I went to Mr. Rody and, and the city clerk, and we made the correction and wanted to get it corrected for the minutes.
I don't hear any complaints with that, can we get a motion to revise the minutes?
I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion that we go ahead and revise the minutes as stated.
All right, we have a motion by Ms. Vols, can I get a second? Oh, Mr. Fram, you want a second there? All right, Mr. Frampton, all right, all those in favor of amending the minutes, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries, please, please amend the records. All right, thank you.
Do we want to approve the consent agenda at this time, or do you want to just, because we moved the consent agenda up, so.
Let's do that as well, yes, please. Mr. Frampton, is that a motion to approve the agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you, and a second by Ms. Adams.
Yes, I'll second, oh, sorry.
Mr. Bentley?
You can make your motion. I have a question, though. Never mind, I don't have a question.
You don't have a question, okay, all right, thank you. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. All right, thank you, we're gonna go to public hearings.
For the record, I'm Kristy Fisher, I'm the city's planning director, and even though this is the second reading of the agenda item, I'm going to, oops, put up the wrong one, I am going to go through an abbreviated version of the presentation, and this is agenda item five A on the agenda, about the Hollywood and Eber Boulevard parcels, this is for the rezoning, and again, staff looks at any requests that come into the city through the lens of the land development regulations, which is a section of the city codes and our comprehensive plan. So the applicant is in the audience, it's Mark Watts, the attorney for the property owners, the attorney will explain more about the rezoning, but remember, this is where we made the change, as talked about with your previous adoption of the minutes, to go from forty-four acres being rezoned to forty point eight acres, and that change was reflected in your staff report, nothing else really on this slide changed, and it's still in roughly the same area, minus almost four acres, not quite. So as a reminder of the previous action, in, in January, the Planning and zoning board recommended to approve the C1A rezoning to, to approve the C1A rezoning from the RA that we had, we put out the notices, we did the advertisement, and we had a few postponements of the city council meeting, then last March 18th meeting, you all made your motion, and the staff understands that part of that motion was the two strips of property without zoning, future land use designations have to be addressed in the next six months. This slide remains the same, it's just a reminder that zoning falls under future land use, not literally, you won't go to the comprehensive plan and find zoning listed there, but you, you can't have one without the other, they go together in a pair. Property history, nothing has changed on this slide, it's still part of the eleven hundred acres that was annexed in nineteen ninety, and it's still that track seven. This is really where the, the change comes, remember, we have a little sliver along the north property line next to West Melbourne Landings, and a little sliver of property along the south property line next to Manchester Lakes, that's no longer included, and that exclusion was reflected in the legal description, which is part of the ordinance. So again, this was another image that we had shown comparing that nineteen ninety future land use legal description versus the twenty twenty-four property legal description, and it's approximately eighteen point nine acres on the north side between those two parcels, and on the south side, approximately twenty-one point nine seven acres. So again, that, that is reflected in the legal descriptions, that is part of the ordinance. This was another image to show everyone that, you know, ninety-five percent of the property on the north side still was entitled to that commercial, the professional offices, commercial zoning district, and ninety percent on the south side. We don't operate in a vacuum, state of Florida says that we have to consider property rights, it's actually written into statutes, and that, you know, the, the city, that's why we underlined that phrase, it says the city of West Melbourne shall respect judicially acknowledged and constitutionally protected private property rights in their decision making, and so by having the commercial future land use, they have a right to have a, a commercial zoning district, but that professional offices and services is the lowest intensity type of district that's more compatible with surrounding land uses. So in conclusion, our recommended motion is to approve the second reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-five oh one, rezoning forty point eight acres from the RA to C1A, which is consistent with the commercial future land use designation, with a provision that the two land strips, the three point one two acres located on the north and south sides of Eber Boulevard, be addressed in the next six months with a future land use map amendment and rezoning. And I know that the applicant is here, if you all wanted to hear from them, but if I could have the attorney read the title, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, this is ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash zero one, in accordance to the city of West Melbourne, Bivard County, Florida, rezoning properties of land located at the northeast and southeast corners of Hollywood Boulevard and Eber Boulevard, totaling forty point eight plus or minus acres, and as more fully described herein, from city of West Melbourne RA, residential agricultural, city of West Melbourne C1A, professional offices and services, providing an effective date.
Thank you very much. Mr. Carey, does the applicant wish to speak? Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council, for the record, Mark Watts with the law firm of Cobb Cole, two thirty-one North Woodland Boulevard Deland, and I have the exact same presentation to go through from last meeting, so if you, if I get a collective, you know, nod of the heads, I won't go through that, that whole thing, but I did really want to give you an update on, well, first of all, thank Kristy Fisher and her staff, because I think the presentation she just provided really covers, you know, the points of the, the application before you, and we've appreciated the opportunity to work with them. But I did want to give you an update, at the last meeting, we talked about coordinating with the county on widening Hollywood, and so I wanted to give you an update, we did meet with the county legal team and their public works team, the right-of-way acquisition group, last Monday, and had a very positive meeting. They have since provided the engineering designs that they've prepared for the road improvements to our engineering team, we're going through their stormwater calculations, trying to work to identify appropriate locations for perhaps joint-use ponds that, that would serve not only the road expansion, but the future development of the property, would give us an opportunity perhaps to locate them in areas that would provide additional buffering to some of the surrounding areas, and I think a key issue that we talked about was that ultimately that's going to result, that those discussions will result in an agreement regarding kind of how all of this begins to move forward, that will come back and involve the city as well. And so our expectation is our next meetings will involve both the county staff and city staff to start working through the particulars of those agreements, so that we can prepare that to come back to, to this council as well for review and consideration with regard to that moving forward. So I think that was, again, I think the, the county attorney said we could feel free to come back in and report that we had a very positive meeting with them, so we felt good about that. I'm here to answer any other questions that you might have, and certainly appreciate the time that you've spent with us and that your staff has spent with us working on the application.
All right, this is a public hearing, I don't have any, any cards, so public hearing was open, and I'll close the public hearing, so there's nothing for you to read but council discussion, Mr. Frampton.
I don't have any questions.
Miss, your latest.
I don't have any questions.
Oh, you don't have any, all right, and Ms. Vols, you have a question?
No, I have a.
Oh, you have a comment, all right, thank you.
I just don't have any questions for him, he doesn't have to keep.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you. I just, I want to make a motion that we move forward with, want to make a motion consistent with the one we made that we just corrected, so if Megan wants to read that over again, that's fine, if not, it's whatever's consistent with the same motion we made the first round. You want to read that motion again, please, Megan?
I will, I'm, I'm gonna change it to be second reading, obviously, so this would be, your motion would be to approve the second reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash zero one, rezoning forty point eight plus or minus acres of property located on the northeast corner and southeast corner of Hollywood Boulevard and Eber Boulevard, from RA, residential agriculture, to C1A, professional offices and services, to be consistent with the commercial future land use designation, including a time limit of six months for the applicant to address the two north and south properties not included with the survey, consistent with the north and south residential properties. You're going to add that if the property eventually applies the Live Local Act, council directs the city to ask for the impact fee inland rather than dollars.
Thank you.
Ms. Vols, did you want a second?
Yes, I will second, but, but I just have a question going back to nineteen ninety, when this whole thing happened. Back in ninety, who changed the zoning on that, was, was it the property owner?
Yes.
They wanted it changed commercial?
No, we're talking about two different things, so in nineteen ninety, there was a future land use.
Future land use, yeah, okay, who did that, the city did that?
That was the Carrassis, the ones who brought in the eleven hundred acres, and so there's that seventy-four page document that you all marched forth, I think, had postponed the meeting, so you could go through that.
Right, so they're the ones that did this?
That's right.
To begin with?
That's right.
Okay.
Right.
But yet, they wanted it, they wanted to keep it so they didn't have to pay the taxes, they wanted to keep it residential.
As residential agricultural, that's probably what Mr. Watts can tell us to, but that's my understanding, is that they knew that the future land use and the zoning didn't match up, but that one way of trying to make sure that there is an agriculture exemption is to have the zoning, so that even though you have cows, you can also say to the property appraiser, it has the correct zoning to have the cows, therefore it is agriculture. So I think that was their incentive in nineteen ninety.
Okay, so when somebody does something like that, do you not think that it should be, that they should use it for that, whatever that they want?
It was consistent with statute, they were allowed to make a future land use designation, but keep it RA according to.
Well, obviously, yes, but is that something that we can do now? I mean.
Yeah, our code, what our code really calls for is that once we give a commercial or whatever the designation is, because remember, we've got ten designations, then they really should have a zoning that matches up with that. We don't specify in our code the timeframe for that, we just say that, yes, it, you should have it as that, and I think what happened going back to nineteen ninety, because I've seen the map that the Carrassi people had put together as their company, Norpac, they had shown that area as town center, so I think there was sort of a good faith understanding between the city and the property owner, that there would be a town center of sorts built there, but that never occurred. So the property being zoned RA is kind of a holding zoning, it's not going to be anything lower, and it most likely will have to be something with a higher use to it to match up to that future land use.
Okay, I'm, I was just curious about that, thank you.
In fairness, they did have cows on that for a long time. I can't hear you.
In fairness, they had cows there for a long time, I know.
They did, yeah.
All right, thank you, so there's a motion on the floor by Mr. Frampton, and a second by Ms. Vols. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries seven zero, thank you. Public forum, I do not have any speaker cards, is there any members of the public that wishes to be heard? Thank you, we'll move on to the next item, action agenda, task order, engineering services, Mr. Petroni.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. As Mayor said, this is, the subject of our conversation is a task order for the engineering services during construction for the well development project. Back in September two thousand twenty-one, council approved the task order number four with Hazen and Sawyer, for them to start the design for the development of our production wells and monitoring wells, the production wells would produce the water for the future water treatment plant. Those wells obviously have been completed now, back in July of twenty twenty-four, we've got four production wells, three monitoring wells, we put, Hazen and Sawyer also did the design, we were able to put out the project out for bids, we secured really good qualified bids, and that contract was ordered to Florida Design back in February fourth of this year. Now that the wells have been completed, now we've got to develop them, outfit them with all the necessary piping, pumps, telemetry, electrical services, et cetera, and secure them, so we can get the water from the wells to the water treatment plant, and then finish off the monitoring well, so they can monitor the quality of the water. So this basically, we had a pre-con meeting with FDD not too long ago, so the construction and the development of the wells is rapidly approaching, which is why we're here to talk about this task order, which is needed for the engineering services during construction. The fiscal aspect of this project, this has all been funded and part of the water treatment project, so there's really nothing negative or more positive about it to discuss. So based on all that, I'm here to recommend to the council that you approve and authorize the city manager to enter in a task order with Hazen and Sawyer, and the amount not to exceed two hundred and seventy thousand, eight hundred and forty-three dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Petroni. What's the wishes of the council? Any comments? I don't have any lights on. Any motions? Mr. Gaylord.
Motion to approve.
I'll make a motion that we approve the task order for engineering services for the construction of the well site development project.
All right, motion by Mr. Gaylord, second by, I'm sorry, Mr. Ms. Maguire.
Second.
All right, thank you. All right, all those in favor of approving the task orders?
I had a quick question.
I'm sorry, Ms. Adams.
That's okay. Mr. Petroni, quick question on eight A eleven, if you'd bother to take a look, you don't have to, I can read it real quick. It says the city will provide, and it's under the assumptions category, it says the city will provide full-time daily observation, the duration of the construction project, such as the consultant's field observation services, you know, are limited based on the, the task order that's presented. Who's responsible for doing that full-time daily observation of the project?
We have me, we have our construction inspector, we have our new water plant director, that we're getting his feet wet pretty quick, and we also have the new city engineer, as well as the engineer of record, ISS, is going to be having their gentleman monitored, which is a task order you approved not too long ago for their services, so we have a whole set of eyes hopefully to keep this in, in line as well.
So when we have to articulate that it's full-time and daily, is someone always from our city, staff-wise, always on property for this project? our city, staff-wise, always on property for this project?
Yeah, full-time might be a little stretched because we're not going to have anybody camping out there, but we're going to have enough people there, and especially during the critical stages, which I always consider, like the pumps when they get in, when they start doing a lot of the major critical stuff. We have our building department also going to be involved because we've got the pads, the slabs, the fencing, and some other things. So I think we're going to have enough eyes on this project. I don't know if I'd say full-time, eight hours a day, but there's going to be a lot of people going on.
That's what I thought. I just wasn't sure if it was opening us to any legal issues if something went wrong with the project and then they're going to say, well, it says that you have someone full-time daily and we didn't. So I'm assuming, but I don't want to assume, so I'd rather check with someone.
Yeah, we, you know, the cost is pretty substantial, but we're not, the city's never been in the well business before, so we're putting in these seven well structures and hopefully they will last 50 years, and we won't have a lot of topics about wells in the future. Hopefully we won't need any more wells. And so we just want to make sure that it's right. And so this, Hazen's task order here is really the technical side of things. As far as the day-to-day operations, we have plenty of staff that will be keeping an eye on it and be able to track the progress. And so we're not a concern from the cities.
Great. Thank you.
Ms. Folds?
Yeah, then why do we have, can we take full-time out of there and put something else in there?
I think this language is, you know, obviously this is Hazen's task order, and Hazen's a big company that puts language in there to try to protect themselves. But at the end of the day, you know, let's keep in mind, at the end of the day, FDD Florida Design Drill is the company that's going to be building this, and we also have a lot of confidence in them. We've worked with them and feel that they're going to give us a very good product. So between, you know, our project manager, our construction inspector, our engineer, our water plant director, and our water utility guys, we feel we're going to have plenty of eyes on...
So this is their language?
This is their, yeah, this is their task order, not ours.
Thank you, Mr. Frampton.
Just, just to clear up the full-time thing, I think they just want to have access to somebody full-time, and there's going to be daily inspections. It's not like you're going to be out there eight hours a day. You just, they want to have access to somebody full-time, so there'll be a contact person, correct?
Right.
I mean, that seems pretty clear.
And as we know with contracting, we'd love for them to be out here eight hours a day every day. I mean, there's just days where...
I meant about our staff.
Right, but our staff...
They're going to be available full-time and make daily inspections. So I mean, I think it's, anyhow, I know you say four well, the four wells that we've got to feed the water plant. Initially, there was five. Do we still have that fifth option in our pocket, or is that something that, I mean, that's another million-dollar project if we were...
Yeah, we're, we're hoping we don't need a fifth well for quite some time.
But we have the space.
But we have it permitted and identified where it goes, yes.
How long's the permit good for?
St. John's permit, I'm guessing our, is a, the water permit's a 15-year permit.
Okay.
So we would probably have to renew that every 15 years, but we...
Guessing we'll know after the first several years whether we need to expand or not.
Just using some general numbers, when the water plant goes live, we'll be producing 2.2 MGD of water, and each well is capable of 1.1. So we have four wells that can produce 4.4 MGD, but we're only going to be using 2.2. So four is going to be, you know, four is going to be adequate, a little bit overkill. The fifth is for when we get max capacity and when we are actually making, at our full build-out, full water consumption estimate, which was 4.4 million. So then we'll have 5.5.
So there's no value into running the pipe when we're running all the other pipe at the same time? I know it's a, I know it's a significant cost, but I mean, to do it after the fact seems like it would be more costly.
Yeah, and it's just...
I know I'm off topic. I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's just so much, you know, spending another 2 million, a million for a well, another million for the well housing. The other issue is not using the wells enough and then having that issue.
Granted, I wasn't, I wasn't saying put the, well, yeah, okay. Never mind. Thank you.
Yeah, and I could just add real quick, the demographics of all the feasibility studies that we did with Hazen, at max capacity with the city's population of 40,000 projected in 2040, our water needs would be 4 million gallons per day. So that fifth well to go, take you to the fifth would be if we decide to annex or the city grows to a higher potential, then we've got the ability to grow with it. I don't think we're ever going to need that fifth well, but we have the...
Or if we started supplying water to a different area, I guess. I guess we're not, right?
Yeah. They have their own.
Yeah, I mean, if you want to start selling, that's entirely a different movie there, but that's up to you.
But the potential is that if Palm Bay went down, or water plant went down, we could potentially feed them through the system too, right? Yeah, well, we'll have the interconnect agreements with Melbourne and Palm Bay that if their system's calling for water and they have some kind of issue, we'll be able to feed that. But those typically are 24-hour period before the issue's resolved and the plant's back up.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments? All right, we have a motion on the floor from Mr. Gaylord, we have a second by Ms. McGuire. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Thank you. All right. Next item belongs to the chief, and this is a memorandum of agreement between the United States Immigration and Customs Enforcement, otherwise known as ICE, and the West Melbourne Police Department.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor. As you're all aware, earlier this year, the state legislature passed a number of laws regarding immigration and cooperation with federal immigration law, and the expectation laid out in those bills was that local law enforcement would fully support those efforts and implement certain processes to enforce when we ran into someone that was subject to a detainer by ICE. So we've been looking at this for the last few weeks, you know, talking to our local area partners, making sure we didn't rush into that, rush into this, but the expectation has been conveyed to us that each agency address this and bring it forward, the memorandum of agreement with ICE to train our officers to be able to handle these incidents if they should encounter someone that has a current detainer from ICE for detention. Just for a little bit of flavor of what's been going on around us, it has passed in Satellite Beach, Melbourne, and BCSO. Titusville is going on their next agenda, Rockledge is tonight, and Palm Bay is on Thursday. So there's 212 current active agencies in Florida that have an agreement, and there's 43 that have been signed but not fully implemented yet. So just a little bit of flavor of what's been going on around us. So as we look at this agreement, you know, there's some important things in here. One is that either party can terminate this agreement at any time. So if we become unhappy or the expectation of our officers would be not as it's laid out in the agreement, we certainly can terminate at any moment. There's no, in the state law, there's no minimum number of officers that we would have to have trained under this bill. I think at this point, I would anticipate probably a couple officers on each squad, but certainly not the whole department at this point.
Chief?
Yes?
You say we can terminate it, but according to Attorney General, we're not allowed to do that. So we're not allowed to say no.
Well...
So, so I don't know that I agree with what you're saying. I know the federal agreement says we can terminate it, but if we decided to terminate it, we would all get fired.
There could be consequences, yes.
So, so, yeah, signing the agreement says one thing, but the Attorney General, the state of Florida is saying another, so...
Well, but keep in mind, this Attorney General at this time is saying...
I get it. I know this is very political, and some of the changes they made to the law is, is very broad, and their interpretation is very broad in the law, in the broad, you know, changes they made. So every officer, and I don't know, maybe you want questions at the end of your summary of the thing? Would that be better?
I'm open for questions at any time.
Now, I read through this thing, and there's a lot of concerns I have with once the officer agrees and gets trained, we could actually lose that officer for a significant amount of time. They, it says right in there that they'll be, they could be assigned to a task force and be assigned to wherever ICE wants to assign them. So I'm concerned of how broad our participation is going to be, and I hope we limit it to just a few people per shift or something of that nature. And I was wondering what your thoughts were on that. And I, most of my concerns are financial. None of them are immigration concerns, because I fully agree that we should enforce immigration policy, but this agreement gives, you know, it allow, and it allows them to utilize our officer on our dime.
Yeah, so I could address that a little bit. So the model, there's three different models. This one is the task force model. There's a separate one for the jails that covers some different aspects. But this isn't a, we're going to pull your officers out of your agency and they're going to be assigned to ICE. We're, one is that's not the indication and not all the feedback we've gotten on this, and two, we're not going to allow that to happen. We're, it doesn't give them rights over our people. It allows us, our people to be trained, and then if they encounter a civil detainer, but they're not going to come into any agency and say, give me your eight people. Now, on the other hand...
Our people say, yes, I'm okay with going, and they want them, and you say no, you wind up getting fired because you're creating a roadblock according to our state, new state law.
Sure. So, one, I'm not going to put us in a position where I intend to get fired or have us in violation of the agreement, but we work on the task force model with many things, from our cooperation with the FBI. Sometimes the DEA comes in and we work a case with them. This would only be in joint cooperation with them, not them coming in and saying, all right, give me your people from, two people from each squad, they're detailed to us for the next two weeks. It would only be if there was a, an operation where they say, hey, in Brevard County, we've got 400 people that are violent felons, and we want your assistance for a two-day process to go out and look for these people. We do that with the feds or other agencies at this point anyways. If someone asks for assistance and we have people available, we always work together with our state, local, and federal partners. So nothing would really change with this. This just allows our officers as they, especially as they encounter, you know, in a criminal case and there's an active detainer, it would allow them to act upon that detainer and then take the person up to the jail.
Right, but as far as the task force goes, they don't, they don't even technically have to be trained ICE agents to go work on a task force. As long as there's another trained person there, they don't have to implement the arrest. They can just assist with the task force, right? I mean, that's...
Correct.
So, again, that we need to limit the amount of people that we have that go through the training, so it limits our, you know, possibility of losing staff.
Well, yeah, because if, you know, we need certain minimum coverage to cover our street and handle the calls for service. So if we have a limited number on each squad that can handle these things as they're encountered, and we're, of course, on the, the squads work together with the same days off, so we can really kind of ensure that we have just a couple on each shift.
I like the ability of having them on the squad, because then if we have an immigration problem in our town, they can actually be called in or respond to the scene and deal with it. That way, you're not having to wait for an ICE agent for two or three hours to get on scene for...
Right, and with those people that are relied upon to handle our basic calls for service, we're not detailing them out unless we say it's okay to, because we need to cover our street first. Certainly, in that case, I'm not going to be the only chief or the only sheriff that's not going to be allowing that to happen, and, you know, there's always consequences. But we, every indication we have is that's not going to happen unless agencies have the manpower at that moment to assist with a particular operation. But what I think is going to be happening is 90% of the activities that we do with this, maybe 95, I don't know what that number is, you know, until you get into it, is just going to be when we encounter someone that is one of these people that have a, there's been 700,000 that are entered into as having current detainers, likely because of criminal convictions or criminal cases that are out there. If we encounter them on the street, it would allow our officers to take action just like they would with any other arrest warrant or, you know, could be a state local or a federal arrest warrant out there. It allows them to handle that detainer, get the person to the jail, and then ICE works directly with the jail for any detainer at that point.
So just touch on that a little bit, because with this warrant, the 700,000 warrants that were entered into the system overnight, basically, explain that our officers can't act on those independently if that's the case, right?
That is correct, and that is the case, you know, we have to have a separate pending criminal charge that, you know, someone would be, right now, that someone would be taken up to jail for. So they do a felony retail theft, they're going up to the jail. Possession controlled substance, domestic battery, whatever it may be, if those people happen to have, that, you know, they're going to go to jail and they're going to be taking on those detainers anyways. But we could come across someone on a traffic stop after this agreement is in place, that there is a detainer, which is similar to a warrant, that if we're aware of that detainer, then we would, even if we didn't have independent criminal charges, then they could be taken, but it's not going to be a case where on a traffic stop and there's not a detainer that we're independently questioning the status and checking the status on every driver, every passenger in a car. It's those people we come across in our duties that might have those detainers.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. Any other comments on this? Mr. Frampton, your light is still on? No? Any other comments?
I didn't know if you...
Mr. Bentley?
Did you want to finish?
No, I just...
I think we've all pretty much...
No, there's, I mean, we just, I'm open for any questions. I don't need to really touch on any other.
So, from what I read, we're still responsible for liability if an officer gets injured or killed on that task, even though for tort purposes, he's covered under the federal government's rules. Is that true?
Yes.
That's what I read, anyway.
Yep, so they are covered under the Federal Tort Claims Act and workers' compensation claims if they're acting in this capacity. That specifically says that in this agreement.
Right, but for death or injury, we, the city, is liable?
Correct.
Okay. The one area that I, you know, I think training's going to be a big deal on this, because I worry that, especially maybe a newer officer, if he arrests that person and you don't have a technical or maybe a criminal warrant out, then we can get sued over that. We, the city, can get sued over that, that you've got to be careful that it's only the people that are in the 287 program that do these activities. An outside officer can't do that, and we have to make sure that there are certain things in place before we can do it.
That's absolutely correct. You know, every arrest that we make with just probable cause and without a warrant, we have to have enough or we're going to get sued. And same case here, an officer that does not have this training, they can't independently act on a detainer without someone that's part of this and is trained to do so.
Right, but the city's then liable, not the federal government, for that officer's activities because he did something he shouldn't have done.
Absolutely, yeah, just like in any other case that we, every call for service we go to, if they make an arrest and they shouldn't have made an arrest, we're going to be held accountable for that.
And you think, well, I'm curious, why didn't the sheriffs get selected instead of the local agencies? Seems like there'd be a lot easier to do the training than trying to train, say, 20 cities. You could train one county maybe, for example.
Yeah, so they, they went to a, instead of a...
Part of it.
...in-person training at ICE facilities, they've adjusted it now to a 40-hour online training for each one that is nominated and approved to be a part of this program.
So is the sheriffs equal with us on this, or how's that work?
What do you mean by equal?
Well, they're not the lead. It's independent agencies.
Every agency's their own lead, basically?
Oh, yes, that's correct.
Yeah, the tie-in...
Yeah, the tie-in with the sheriff's office is really because the sheriff has the jail.
Jails.
They've got the jail. We have a, we have holding area here, but we don't have a jail. And so, that's part of the tie-in with this is the actual jail itself, which falls under the sheriff.
Who's responsible for the notifications, though? Is it the jail wants they get there or if we arrest somebody, is our department responsible for the notification, the ICE notification?
We will be responsible for, the jail will be ultimately responsible because our officers that are trained in this will have specific paperwork that the jail requires for them to be brought in there and then-
I'm sorry, if our officer, if our officer, untrained officer, arrests somebody on other charges and sees the current warrant on there, do they just notify the jail and then it's the jail's responsibility to contact ICE? Or is it our officers, is it still our department's responsibility to contact ICE? Because we can arrest them on other charges, but there's still, it's supposed to be a notification if we arrest them.
Yeah, so we actually have received guidance from the state attorney's office that in our charging document, which would be our 923 affidavit, language that a person that's not trained under this should add to the charging document to put everyone on notice that this-
So, it's our responsibility.
We would put it in there, but ultimately then the jail would contact ICE because they will, they're under the jail model and, you know, once they know that someone has that status, they notify ICE and ICE has 48 hours to act. And if they don't act within 48 hours, then the person would be released.
Sounds like there's a lot of room for dropping the ball somewhere along the line.
Thank you, Mr. Frampton. Mr. Gaylord?
Chief, I don't have any questions for you. I was actually going to direct my questions to Mr. Carey. We spoke earlier this morning. Do you have any concerns about this MOU establishing precedence for either the state legislator or the governor's office in terms of their ability to, in effect, strong arm us into passing certain legislation? And the example that came to mind when we were discussing this morning is, we were just in Tallahassee last week discussing the amendments that were being made to the Live Local Act. And, you know, we made a point to sign in opposition to that bill. Do you have any concerns about the legislature, you know, coming out with, for example, an amendment to the Live Local Act with language similar to this MOU that could, you know, potentially, you know, disallow the city from, you know, taking issue with that?
Yeah, and the conversation was kind of along the lines of that the city is a political subdivision of the state. And we are a creature of state statute. The state creates us and the state has the authority to tell us what to do and tell us what not to do. And that was, you know, I could go back a little farther. Prior to the 1968 Constitution, Florida was a Dillon's Rule state, which basically meant that cities only had powers that were expressly granted to them by the legislature. With the 1968 Constitution, Home Rule was brought in, which meant that cities have inherent powers and don't need to go to the legislature to ask for permission to do every little thing, but the state legislature could still restrict what we can do and tell us what we can do consistent with general law, which basically means a legislative act. And so, this bill's, in a way, it's kind of consistent with what's always happened since 1968. The state certainly has the authority to tell cities what to do and, in a way, it's a little bit different because, you know, the state is now telling cities, "You shall, you know, work with the federal government for this area." That's really a federal responsibility.
Sure, and I think the area, the primary area of discussion we were having earlier this morning was particularly with respect to the governor's office and their ability to potentially remove legislators from office that disagree with the findings being handed down.
And you certainly saw in the bill, if you read through the materials, the bill does give the governor power to remove, so sanctuary cities have been illegal in Florida since 2019. The bill this year, though, kind of puts some teeth behind that and basically gives the governor power to remove an officer who doesn't comply with the laws that have been passed in this area. And, you know, so that's certainly an expansion of the governor's role in this area, but the governor has always had the power to remove local officials for things like misconduct. And so, you know, to the extent that they, you know, have determined that not following the law is misconduct-
And again, really what I'm getting at is, I want to make sure, are you concerned at all that this essentially, you know, this MOU essentially enables the governor's office to put those teeth behind further acts of legislation that may come down the pipe?
Yeah, I mean, there's always potential for something like this to be expanded beyond what we're seeing today. The real policy difference I see in this compared to what we've been doing is really mostly, I think, limited to when a contact is made through some non-criminal matter because for criminal matters, it was always going to go to the jail, meaning the suspect is always going to go to the jail for processing. And then the county would have the responsibility to process them, notify ICE for the detainers. Where this really expands the city's role, I think, is for those non-criminal interactions where they, we can now, if you have, you know, some sort of a call that the officer's brought out and it's not a criminal matter, now has the responsibility to, you know, report that to ICE and work with the county on doing that. And so, you know, that's a kind of minor expansion compared to what we've done all along. Certainly, you know, it could be a camel's nose under the tent to continue to expand the role of the city's-
This was kind of a stretch, right? I mean, they're saying that if you turn this down, you're supporting a sanctuary policy. You know, Fort Myers, they said they were implicitly implementing a sanctuary policy. That's not what they did.
Well, that's the Attorney General's interpretation.
Yeah, but I mean, it was a stretch on, I mean, obviously, you're never going to know until you take it to the Supreme Court and challenge it, right?
Exactly, and so, and eventually, that'll probably happen. I imagine at some point, somebody's going to be made an example of and we'll see how the courts handle it. But, you know, as of right now-
They'll get fired, right?
Well, I mean, that's your decision. But as of right now, you know, we have a bill in front of us that the Attorney General has interpreted to mean that we have to enter into this agreement. And I'm sure they're looking for cities who don't want to do so to make an example of. And they've already sort of done that with Fort Myers. Fort Myers capitulated and we'll see, you know-
Quickly.
The very next meeting, yeah. So, you know, that's kind of where we stand today. And so, yeah, I mean, certainly, any future legislation can build on this if that's what they choose to do.
Right, okay. So, there is a hypothetical universe that exists, for example, where the amendment to the Live Local Act does pass the Florida legislature and there is an addition to that amendment that says, for example, if we don't pass this or, you know, the city council here, based on the comments that our residents made two weeks ago, feels that it's not in the best interest of our residents, you know, the governor's office or the legislature could put, you know, that wording behind that bill potentially as well to say, you know, we would be impeding either, you know, the governor's will or the legislature's will such that, you know, constitutes removal from office.
Yeah, and the legislature has, for several years now, been adding teeth to the whole preemption issue. You know, I guess it was probably five or 10 years ago, they made it so that if you, if a city makes an ordinance that violates a preemption and somebody challenges it, they'll get attorney's fees and the city has to pay for it. So, that was an expansion of the states, you know, trying to put teeth behind the preemption. They, specifically for guns, you know, made members of the council personally liable if you violated gun preemption. So, you know, this is kind of, I guess, along those same principles where the legislature's looking for, I think, new avenues to enforce preemptions.
You wrote the Home Rule?
You could word it like that, yeah. It's really, I think, to enforce the preemptions because they've always had the power to preempt, but then the question becomes, well, what if the local governments ignore us, right? And so, they're trying to add teeth to that, I think.
Last question for you. When we spoke this morning, you mentioned that you didn't believe that we had any opportunity to go to the legislature and ask for potential amendments to the MOU, but I did see that there was a section regarding MOUs would need to be bilaterally signed by both parties. If there was interest in the council for getting any of the language in the MOU amended, is that an option that we could look into?
I certainly wouldn't say you can't look into it, but when the federal government gives you an MOU, it's usually not an invitation to negotiate.
Fair, okay, thank you.
Mr. Gaylord, since you have the floor and I don't have any lights on, did you want to make the motion?
No, but I will.
You can say no.
No, I was just joking, I was just joking.
I'll make the, I'll make the motion to approve the memorandum of agreement between the United States Immigration and Customs Enforcement Agency and the Westmoreland Police Department.
Thank you. Do I have a second? I don't have a light on for the second. I don't have a-
My light is on.
I don't have any lights on, but Ms. Foles-
Mine, oh, I hit it, sorry.
My, this light is on. A second by Ms. Foles, all right. Chief, don't go away. I do have a question for you after this, though. All right, are those in favor? Signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you very much. So, this is after the fact. The officers, are they on board with this? Are they on board with the ICE training and doing all this?
So, I haven't polled any of the individual officers, but certainly, I think we'll, our plan is to look for people that volunteer to be a part of this training and I think we'll have enough that would be willing to do that.
Okay, all right, that was it, thank you.
Is there a separate policy you're going to implement as far as criteria? I know that they have their own criteria of two-year service and get approved through some kind of approval process. Are we going to have our own criteria?
We will, absolutely. For any internal posting, we have a whole process. We send it out to the agency when we're seeking input and we list out any of the qualifications. You have to be off of, let's say, off of probation, no disciplinary action the last 12 months, you know. It lays out any of those, so what we would do is post this, kind of like we would any other position, which we have established policies that, to kind of lay out how we do that.
I would like you to limit how many we have as well.
That's my intention. I would do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next item is Mr. Carey's and this is regarding residency.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And this ordinance is the result of a, of a direction that we were given as staff as part of a workshop. As you know, as a workshop, you can discuss things, give direction to staff, you can't approve anything, but you can tell staff to bring you something back in the future. And so, the council had expressed interest in an ordinance that kind of further defines residency for the purpose of serving on the city council. And so, this is the, I'll call it a first draft, you know, it's certainly open for change. We didn't get a whole lot of direction as far as specific policies with that, but I did try to include all the things that were discussed that I had in my notes. So, but first, a little background. As you all know, the city charter provides residency requirements. And ordinances can be passed that are consistent with the charter and in some ways go beyond the charter, but we can't have lesser requirements that are in the charter nor can we have requirements in ordinances that are contradictory to the charter. So, the charter does provide that the, that any member shall continue to reside in the city during their entire term of office and shall have the qualifications of a city elector. So, that's kind of our baseline. You can't have anything that contradicts those things. And that, it also provides that a council member shall forfeit the office if the council member fails to meet the residency requirement. But the charter doesn't provide any criteria for determining requirements for maintaining residency. So, the ordinance is an attempt to provide some clarity as to what's meant by residency in the city charter. It creates a new section, 22-4, which provides some criteria. These criteria are essentially distilled from court cases and/or Attorney General opinions and/or Division of Election opinions that have decided matters of residency. And so, I've tried to be consistent with what courts have already determined are valid usages of the residency requirements. And so, the first one is to be an elector. That one's a mandatory requirement since it's in the charter. The next one is-
Can you explain that? That's just having your voter ID card?
It's, yeah, being registered to vote in the jurisdiction where you wish to serve. The next one is domicile, essentially where your home is. The next one is your present intent, as we discussed during the workshop. There are situations where somebody may not temporarily have a home in the jurisdiction if their intent is to remain a resident and to become a, and to move back into the city. You know, and so, an example is if your house burns down, you go to live with your parents while you're rebuilding your house and they're out in the county. You don't necessarily lose your residency status because your house burned down, but, you know, once the decision is made where you're not going to move back into your house or buy a new house in the city, then you would lose your status. Government documents and registrations, so you could certainly consider whether you have your driver's license, for example, and that has an address in the city. And homestead exemption. Again, homestead exemption can't be mandatory because under federal constitutional rules, renters are allowed to serve an office and obviously, a renter wouldn't have a homestead exemption, but it's a factor you could look at for a homeowner, for example. So, if somebody maintains two homes, does one of them, is the home outside the city the one that they claim the homestead exemption on? So, state law doesn't provide requirements for residency, but these are some of the factors that have been used by courts and the opinions that I cited. And the ordinance also amends section 22-2 to provide a requirement for the candidate to provide the city clerk a notarized affidavit signed by the candidate swearing that the candidate is a resident of the city. That's currently not a requirement. It's something that was brought up as something that the council may be desirous of and so that's been included. And I've also created a new section, 22-5, to provide that any member of the council may raise the issue of residency to the full council, which the council shall be required to investigate. So, that's kind of the ordinance as it stands now. I'm certainly willing to add anything or subtract anything as to the council's will and so, this is really open for discussion at this point as to what you all want.
Mr. Frampton?
Couple of questions. Can we, I'm guessing we can by what you just said, set that you have to meet several of these standards, two, three of the, of what you listed here? Elector is the same thing as a government document, right? I mean, because that's a voter ID card, right? So-
It's specific in that it means that you're registered to vote. So, it's not just that you're having the document, it's also being registered and eligible to vote.
And there's a liability to that, too, if you lie about-
Well, yeah, I mean, that's, and that's what the affidavit is.
You can actually get criminal charges on that.
Right, when you file with the Supervisor of Elections Office, you have an affidavit that's where-
So, in our ordinance, we can set that you have to meet two of the five standards or something, correct?
You could. The concern I would have is if you meet two of them but aren't really a resident, you know, would that weigh in favor of somebody who's not even a resident of being retained because they meet-
Charter says you have to be a resident, so that automatically says you have to be a resident.
Well, but-
That would apply, oh, that would be the umbrella and all this would fall under the umbrella, correct?
Well, but when you say a resident, yeah, the charter does say you have to be a resident. What we're trying to do is define what it means to be a resident, right? Because that's not currently in the charter or the ordinances. And so, you know, my concern with what you've said, and certainly, you're all entitled to do whatever you want, if you say, you know, you have to meet two of them, well, that kind of opens the door for, you know, for example, being an elector, filing, you know, giving the Supervisor of Elections your address at a friend's house and saying you're renting a place from them and then, you know, the intent. All right, well, I've met two criteria, therefore, I'm a resident. I don't know that you want to limit yourself to your ultimate decision based on what's really a totality of the circumstances.
Okay. Next question is setting a timeframe on intent. You know, you can, your intent could be that you want to move back, but it, reality might be a year and a half, which I think is probably too long. It's, you know, should intent have a time limit to it?
Well, I mean, that, so that depends. Like, if the example is your house burns down, I don't know how long it takes to rebuild a house, to get all the permitting, to get the debris cleared. And if somebody is actively building a house that they're going to live in, but it takes a little longer than that because, you know, construction just takes time, would you suggest that they shouldn't be on the council if they're building a house that's going to be their that they shouldn't be on the council if they're building a house that's going to be their homestead?
They're not living in the city for six months? Yeah.
So, you know, those are the kind of policy decisions that you obviously can make, and, you know, I, I can draft the ordinance for second reading, however you want it to read.
But I think that then invokes section 22-5, which is...
You can make...
Then you can make that case. You know, you can bring, any council member can bring it to the council to say, you know, it's gonna be two years before the house is rebuilt. I don't think they should be on the council.
Well, that's another question I'm gonna have, getting down to that. So, the other thing that I would like added, that when you talk about the notarized affidavit, it just talks about being a candidate. I would like it to read that qualified date, or if a current member upon the request of the city clerk is, requests them to give them an affidavit, that they're still a resident. Is that what I...
Can you say that one more time?
Currently, it's if you're a candidate. This only applies if you're a candidate, but if you're an active member and, and somebody questions it, the first thing that we can do before going into a full-blown investigation is asking somebody for an affidavit that they're, they're still a resident, right?
Right. Essentially qualifying that they're still...
We had talked about that before, and you brought it up about that, so adding that to that section, that if, if it gets brought up and the, and the clerk asks any of us for an affidavit, we should be willing to do it, and if we're not, it disqualifies us.
So, if we want to include language in there, would we also want to include some limiting language, for example, that wouldn't allow you just to continually harass the same person? They filled one out last week. I want them to do it again, you know?
Obviously, I mean, the, the purpose of the affidavit is to catch somebody in a lie, right? I mean, that's kind of the purpose of it, to, you know, if somebody's gonna willingly sign an affidavit knowing that it's not true, it's gonna be held against them in, in an investigation. So, yes, yes, but I, obviously, there should be no harassment in any of this stuff.
And we, we're, we're trying, you know, we're, we're throwing that one back to get some more discussion on it, because we've done this long enough to know that disputes happen, and we, we certainly wouldn't want anybody here...
I'm okay with no harassment language in there. I mean, that makes sense. I just want the language in there that if the clerk asks you for it, that you're kinda required to give it, at least, I don't know, once.
And, and that's very logical. We're just, you know, we're throwing out kind of a what-if of a what-if, and we certainly wouldn't want somebody on the council harassing another member on the council every week asking for that.
As a candidate, basically, this policy doesn't deal with candidates, it's dealing with current members, so I just think it should be reflective of the current member and not necessarily a candidate.
Okay. I mean, it can add some language to that effect.
Some harassing.
And my, and, yeah, however you want to word it, I'm okay with that. And my last question is, what exactly would the, require, the last line, it says which council shall require to investigate. What's, what's council investigating look like to you?
Yeah, and that's an internal discussion we've had, because that's a tricky one, right? Because...
We went down that path, and, and it was...
Yeah. The intent is to give you all some responsibility to not just sweep it under the rug, but at the same time, you know, ultimately, as you know, the decision becomes you guys. That, that's another one of the minimum requirements under the charter, is that the council is the ultimate decider. Because one of the things I would like to be able to do is, or at least talk about doing is, you know, appointing a special magistrate to, you know, where it becomes kind of, you present your evidence, you present your evidence, and an unbiased special magistrate decides it, but the charter says that you are the ultimate decider. And so, you know, at, at some point, it just comes down to, you guys have to be faithful to the intent of the ordinances, and if you all have the votes to, you know, shut something down as a cursory investigation, I'm not sure how you can really wordsmith your way around that.
Not specific to how an investigation happens. Who, who investigates?
So, and...
You know, we don't want to really put it on the city manager, and obviously, you don't want to do it, and, and, you know, who, who does the investigation? Is it an individual council member that's filing the complaint? Is it the, the, you know, if, if it's the whole council, who presents? You know, who, who is doing this? Somebody has to actually do an investigation if...
And, and one of the things that Tim and I discussed, and he can vouch for this, is, you know, I, I certainly have some ideas of how that could happen, but I didn't want to put something in writing and then, you know, influence how this ultimately gets decided, because ultimately, it's a decision for you guys to make. So, I wanted to put enough in there to get the discussion going without, you know, looking like I was coming down on the scales one way or the other. And so, if you have some ideas, I'm certainly willing to add them to the language and bring it back on second reading.
I, I'd just add to that, that because every case is gonna be so specific, part of the intent of this language would be that you bring that to the council, or, or somebody brings it to the council, and then the council would decide how to investigate. And maybe that's, maybe that's as simple as...
So, the person being accused is gonna vote on how they're gonna be investigated?
They absolutely are, because the council is the only body that can determine the action to remove a council member.
We'll just harass them until they figure it out.
Yeah, but, I mean, wouldn't it just be better to say, hey, we get somebody independent to investigate, and, and then everybody's out of it, and then whoever, whoever was investigated presents to the council, and the council makes a decision? I mean, that's...
And that could be, right. That, and that could be the action of the, that could be the action from 22-5, right? The action of the council could be, well, there, there might be some truth to some of this, let's hire a third party to investigate it and present us the evidence.
And also, if I must say, that the county and the...
Hold on, Ms. Volts, I have four lights on.
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
So, when, when you say that 22, 22-05, but should, if, it shouldn't go to council to determine how it gets investigated. It should, it should be clearly stated that it, this is how it gets investigated, and then it's presented to council, and then council can make an informed decision if, you know, that way, it's not subjective to friendships and, and, you know, how many people like me on council? You know, it's like, if it's presented, it's investigated, you know, if somebody, if somebody makes the accusation...
And...
Instead of it coming to council and saying, okay, let's do it this way, and then next time, we do it this way, and, you know, it just...
And I, I agree with you. I, I agree with what you're saying, what, what, I'm having a hard time, and, you know, Attorney Carey and I have kind of talked about this here for the last, you know, couple of months, is what, what triggers the investigation? So, let's say the council agrees that if, if there's reason to suspect, then a third-party investigator will be hired. What triggers that?
The triggering mechanism is already in the charter.
So, as long as they trigger...
If a council member makes the accusation, then, I don't know, it goes to an independent attorney or something who would do an investigation and then present it to council at a, at a meeting, and then council just votes up or down on it? I mean, I, I think that's simple. I don't, you disagree?
How many times we gotta say the same thing?
Okay. I'll listen to everybody else. I, I talked enough.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Frampton. Our city clerk would like to chime in here, and then that'll be followed by Ms. McGuire and Ms. Volts, and Mr. Gaylord.
We're waiting for that.
Just one quick comment. When you discussed about the elected officials being given an affidavit by me, when you're candidates, you are not the elected body, and I don't think it would be appropriate for me to provide any sort of affidavit to any elected official without some vote or direction by the council. So, I just wanted...
We're going by putting in a policy, we're giving you the direction to follow?
But who would direct me to do that? For example, let's say that you all believe that I'm gonna pick on her, since she's right next to me, that Helen Volz no longer lives here. So, who comes to me and says, you need to give Helen an affidavit? It would have to be a vote of the council. Otherwise, you, you might have factions that decide that they want to give her a hard time, and now I'm put in a strange position because you are all one elected body.
The charter allows us to question that.
I think you can question that.
If the ordinance supports the charter, then that's your direction, right? Is that not...
Except I work for the council, who works for all of you. As an elected official, you're different than a candidate. When you're a candidate, you're kind of subject to me giving you paperwork and asking you to fill it out. As an elected official, it puts you in a different position.
Yes.
Mr. Attorney, who do you recommend does an affidavit, then? Because...
I, I don't know if Tim wants to jump in before I do, because he seems like he's jumping at the bit to say something.
Yeah. I, I think that element, to, to me, the 22-4 residency element is kind of the first step in this process. So, the question is, how do you get to the first step in the process? And to me, the first step in the process starts by a council member questioning residency and bringing it to the body. And then that first step is 22-4, producing those documents to be verified. The question that we're, that Attorney Carey and I get stuck on is, if you meet some of the criteria in 22-4, but there's still a question of residency, how do you get to the investigation? And the first stab at it, and again, this is the first stab at it, and this is what we were looking for, was, was this discussion. Our attempt at the first stab at that was the council saying, okay, we reviewed this, we still question residency, we would like to investigate. In 22-5.
We can figure it out, then.
Then you still have the problem...
Oh, come on.
Then you still have the problem of exactly what we had before, is friendship got involved. It was clear that, well, it was clear to some of us that the residency wasn't there because of federal affidavits that were signed, and it would've, it would've got shot down on council even though residency wasn't there. I, I'm just trying to eliminate, I think you have...
And that's where we're stuck, right?
And, and independent investigation prior to it coming to council, once the, once the claim is made.
So, then the question back is...
Who presents it to council is the question.
Well, but the question comes back to who can authorize, and we'll just use the example of a third-party investigator. Who, who can authorize the third-party investigator?
Okay. Let me get some other people.
And we think that answer is four votes, even though that may not get the result.
Ms. Macon, you had the floor last, is that, are you finished? Did you want to make any other comment? All right. Thank you. Okay. Let me get some comments from others, and Mr. Frampton, we can come back. Ms. McGuire, you've waited a long time. Thank you for your patience.
Okay. So, a question and then a comment. With the affidavit, is it going to be like a form that has to be signed, like something that you've created that has to be notarized, or something that they kind of throw together that says like, oh, I'm a resident and I promise to be one?
It will absolutely be a form. I haven't drafted it yet, because I don't even know if you're gonna want to go forward with this, but should this become an ordinance that you adopt, I will draft a form, which will then be on file, and it'll be, just fill in the name, address, et cetera, and, and so, there won't really be any thing, discretion by either the person filling it out or the clerk.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Volts, followed by Mr. Gaylord.
The county and the state, their requirement is that on election day, on election day, you have to live within your district. While you're campaigning, you, I guess you don't have to live in your district, but on election day, you have to live in the district.
Doesn't it say when you take the office? Because you could lose...
Nope. It says on election day.
Okay.
So, anyway, that, we clear a lot of this up, because when you're campaigning, if you're campaigning for an office, why would you even bother doing it if you're not gonna live there? It makes absolutely no sense at all. And the problems that we've had so far have been people who have sat on the council and, and then moved. So, I think the other issue is probably never gonna happen.
I would also just remind you that the city charter provides that you have, would've had been a resident for at least a year. So, that's an additional requirement above and beyond what the state requires for if you're a candidate for a state office. So, there's an additional layer of protection there, I think. But, you know, I, I don't think the issue, I don't think anybody seems to really have a problem conceptually with the idea that a candidate would have to sign an affidavit, you know, because, as you said, if you're living here, here and have been for a year, you know, unless you're lying, why would you have a problem with that? The, you know, the question is then, you know, should a current office holder have to do the same if, if the, we don't have the candidate qualifying as the triggering mechanism?
Mr. Gaylord?
You'll have to forgive me if this comes off as a bit of an ignorant question, but Mr. Carey, you mentioned our ability to instate an independent magistrate is tied to the charter, and, and right now, our ability as council to be the body that makes the final decision. I'd like to get the read of the council. Do you think that, and Mr. Carey, feel free to step in as well, do you all think that Mr. Frampton's concerns could be at least majorly eliminated if we looked into potentially making an amendment to the charter that would allow us to look into hiring an independent body?
I think it's overkill. I don't, I don't think, I, I just think, I just, I'm just looking for somebody else to investigate it besides us. I want it to be presented facts, and, which we were never in this last case, and I don't know how they dealt with the case before that, where the, I guess the guy had two homes, and he was living in his other home longer than he was living here, right? So, so, there was a difference, difference in this situation.
And again, I think the, I think the primary reason I ask that is because, you know, just considering it from a constituency perspective, I don't know if, to your, to your, to your point, Mr. Frampton, I don't know if that causes any issues about perception with our residents, and, you know, if we, if we did something like go to a referendum, I mean, it might cause the residents or the constituency to kind of understand that we are trying to be a neutral legislative body as opposed to...
We already have the rule. I mean, we're just trying to define what a word is, and the question, the problem was, we didn't have a definition, and that's what the ordinance accomplishes, is defining the rule and the process of, of going through.
Yeah. And certainly, I think you could hire somebody to act as a magistrate if the final decision comes to a vote before the, the council, but then the question becomes, how do you get that person hired? Because, you know, that would require an expenditure of funds, which would require the, you know, four votes of the council. So, once again, we're back to that issue of, you know, how do you get to the investigation? And should it always require four votes of the council, or should an individual member be able to somehow trigger that? And I think that's the tension that we're trying to deal with right now.
Thank you. Mr. Gaylord? Mr. Gaylord, is that your point? All right, thank you. Ms. McGuire?
I mean, it seems like the whole issue gets tied up with who, I mean, the whole point we're stuck at is, so somebody has, thinks somebody doesn't live here, and then what then? I mean, I just reread through this to try to make sense of it in my own brain, but it almost seems like the easiest thing to do would be that if any member of the council raises an issue of residency to the council at a regular meeting of council, then the council, I mean, I personally don't think I should have to investigate my fellow council members. I don't feel like I should be the one to specifically look at the documents and call upon the people. That should be an outsider to do that. So I feel like bringing somebody in to review those documents and to do that investigation would make the most sense. And like Mr. Frampton said, to then bring that back to council for a final vote of yea or nay would, would make the most sense. But that's just my two cents on that.
Mr. Bentley?
Yeah, I'm not sure I support this. I think that it's, no matter what you do, it's gonna come down to four votes. To start the process and to end the process, you gotta have the four votes. And even if you hire, even to hire someone, you gotta have the four votes.
To start the process. Charter allows for one council member to start the process.
And I think it's, in my view, happened once in our lifetime. Even if someone wants to argue the hazelot activity, he was my very next-door neighbor. He was there the whole time. So, now, was he playing games? Yeah, he was playing a lot of games, but he was still a resident. He owned, lived in the house that he lived in. So you'll never convince me different when I'm his very next-door neighbor. The Howell case, I think, was a legitimate question for the council. And I think they have to work through it and come up with a resolution. And you're gonna have to come up with the four votes to resolve it, no matter how we do this process. So I don't see a lot of benefit to changing the rules. Maybe there's some benefit to actually defining what are, adding some benefits to say, "This is what a resident looks like." But if you've got a person that's not gonna be honest with you, man, that's hard, that's hard to get around, you know, in this situation. If they're gonna be dishonest about being a resident, that's just gonna be, you know, you're not gonna go in their house and live with them and see where they're actually spending their time. And I'm not sure we want to spend, it's happened, I think, once in our lifetime. I'm just not willing to say, boy, this is a problem for the city, and we need to come up with a better fix than what we've got. Thank you, Mayor.
Just in, it was said that we'll deal with this after that instance was resolved. Now we're at the point to deal with it, now we don't want to deal with it. I just, I'm confused. I don't disagree with you, Pat. It comes down to four votes. But who presents it to us?
Even to have the argument, you're gonna have to get the four votes. You can, I know, you're saying, in practicality, the rules say, one person can instigate something.
But does that same person that instigates it, is that the person that's gonna present it? And I'm just looking...
I don't know.
I'm just looking for some procedure.
And if it, it had happened, if it happened often enough to make it an issue, I would be willing to...
It happened once, and...
It's happened once. And I've been on this council for 16 years...
And we couldn't resolve it, right?
Well, we did resolve it, they're gone.
It caused a lot of tension.
Yes, it did. I agree with that. But I've been on it 16 years, and I've seen one issue of it. Legitimate issue of it. I'm just not sure that's worth...
You were on one side of it because of your friendship with the council member, and then you were on the other side of it. When the politics started to turn, and you realized that it, you can frown all you want, but you kinda, you kind of, you know, thought it was the right thing in the end, that he resigned. Oh, he retired, to use the right definition. And you, you, in your own words, said that you suggested to him that he retires because of where he lived.
I think there was more politics involved in this than...
It was a po, it was just about residency. There was no politics. It was about residency. It was about one person saying they lived here, and they didn't.
I've, I've...
And alls we're trying to do is define residency.
I've said I'm okay with, if you think it helps to define residency, but I think in the end, it's a four-vote deal. And that's always gonna be an issue. And I don't necessarily want someone from outside telling, involved, I don't even know how you get them involved without four votes. I get that you're saying, we can do this with one vote. I don't think that's a good approach, to start anything with one vote. I think you need to have the will of the council.
I don't care if it's the attorney presenting it to us. I don't, I don't care if it's in-house, out-of-house. I don't care. I think somebody other than the council member should be presenting it. I, that's my only, my feeling, that somebody other than somebody sitting up here should be presenting it. If I got a problem with you, I give somebody the facts, and, and they check it out, present it back to council, and then you get your four votes.
Yeah, I don't know how you do it, because I was gonna say, what if the attorney did that? But then you're putting him in a bad box, because he works for the council.
Here's the mini example, you know, but who else do you use? Everybody...
Tom Bradford.
I mean, it might, it might make sense to use somebody other than somebody that is under our direct authority, like the city manager or the attorney are under our direct authority. But if you use somebody under their authority, it still puts pressure on the city manager, regardless.
Yeah, I, I think, I think let's get, let's get a couple things of consensus that I'm hearing. I hear that 22-4 is good. Defining those elements of residency is better than we had before. 22-4 gives some real clarity, and that seems to be, at least I'm hearing, everybody seems to think that's okay.
Yes, as long as we don't tie a number to it.
Which...
I don't want to say, if you meet two of the requirements, because she still may not be a resident, meet two of them.
I think right now, the beauty of 22-4 is when the evidence comes forward, it's for this council to decide how many they feel comfortable with, each council member. Because maybe, maybe you're, maybe you hit four of the five of these, and one council member says, "I feel good about that," and the next council member wants all five out of five, but that's for you guys to, that's for, this is the definition of these. This isn't the...
Yes.
I agree. After hearing, after hearing the attorney's view on that, I agree.
So then the question becomes 22-2. I think 22-2, the language, you know, ultimately, everybody understands here that the council is the only body that can eliminate the, a council member or a mayor.
Besides the governor.
Or the Attorney General. So then the question becomes, how do you, I think, again, the sticky wicket here is, how do you, how do you get to 22-5? How do you get that day in front of this council body to determine whether someone is still a resident or not? And that's still, I think...
Can I jump in real quick? Because you had mentioned 22-2, and then started talking about 22-5. 22-2 is the affidavit, and I'm wondering if there's a consensus to keep that in, the requirement for a candidate to sign an affidavit, which I haven't had any indication or, you know, dirty looks about the idea of that. And then how to handle the idea of a current member, whether they should be required to upon the request, because that was another issue that's brought up. Currently, the ordinance doesn't have that, and if there's a consensus to add that or not, so that a current member could, you know, somehow compel somebody else to have to sign an affidavit swearing that they're a resident.
Should that be one person or four people?
That's for you all to decide.
Sticky wicket.
Right.
I say four.
Okay, Ms. Adams is trying to get in here as well.
I was fine waiting, Mayor. I figure we'll get to it when we get there. The, the first thing that comes to mind is, I would expect, and yes, I have rose-colored glasses on, I will keep them on as long as possible, but I would expect, when people run for this office, there is an expectation that you're gonna do the right thing, whether it's legally the right thing, or the intent, you know, if the intent is there, and you're following the right thing, and it's legally there, I want people to follow all of the right things. And I think that's what everybody wants. I think that's part of why we run for office. We're gonna follow the policies and procedures of the city and do the best that we can for our residents. I understand why this ordinance came up. I understand the desire to get clarification on what a resident is now, while we don't currently have an issue in front of us, which I think is wise. It takes some of that emotion piece out of it. But I also believe we each have a responsibility as people that were elected to represent our residents, that we don't make decisions as one person. If I have a strong opinion about a policy, or an action, or something that I want to do as an individual, it's still my responsibility up here to convince three more people on this council, that hopefully, it's a good idea, and this is why we should go forward with it. It's with that same understanding that I think, when we're looking at 22-5, and I know the question was just, came up about 22-2, so sorry to jump, but I hadn't given my opinions about it. When it comes to 22-5, and we're talking about the investigation and moving that process forward, yes, I can understand there, we are in a political seat, there may be politics involved, but we make decisions as a majority of council. So if you have information and want to present it, and you can convince four members of council, this is the right action to take, then I think the right action is taking the heat off of someone who might be a staff member, our city attorney, our city clerk. I don't think either of them want that job. Both eyes kind of popped out of their heads, and I want to be respectful, not only to them as people, but to your positions itself. So I think bringing in a third party that can be more neutral, that doesn't have the emotions and feelings, good or bad, of people that sit up here, because there will be people that sit up here years after us. So I'm trying to think about those people in that position. And what if our roles were reversed, and we were then sitting in the audience, watching this conversation happen, whenever the next issue pops up? And I hope it never does. But if it does pop up, what would I want? Well, if I was a resident sitting there watching, I would say, "The council makes decisions as a majority vote." So if you can get four people, you move on, and the process begins. And I think bringing in an outside third party is wise. I think you make a vote as a council. I don't necessarily know if it needs to be spelled out in 22-5. That can be left up to the attorney's opinion, if he wants to give it to us. But we take a vote as a council and say, "Okay, this is the information that I have. Can we move forward with the vote? I would like to investigate this." And we see where council falls. I think, I think that follows all of our previous policies. It's how we make decisions as a decision-making body, so I think that remains consistent. And I think if it came down to, "Okay, we've investigated, a third party has then presented to us, the information is factual, and we want to take action," I think that still falls on a majority of council. So that's my opinion. Thank you.
Ms. McGuire?
Back to 22-2. If I'm not mistaken, because I swear I read it 12,000 times, when we were candidates, don't we already sign something that says that you have been a resident for a year, and there's something, right? I'm not crazy?
Yes, and you also provide your voter registration and your driver's license.
Okay. I was like, I could've sworn we sw...
Is that a sworn document that's notarized, just out of curiosity? Because I honestly don't know. You'd be in the best position to answer that.
I don't believe so.
Because that would be the extra layer of...
It is not notarized. It is signed by the...
So that would be the extra layer, is we'd put it in the form of an affidavit and have it sworn by a notary.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. I was gonna say, you already have to turn that exact document in to the city clerk when...
Yeah, and there are probably five different people at City Hall that are notaries that could do it. So it's not something that would be imposing a cost on a candidate or anything like that. It would just be to have it notarized, to give it that extra formality.
But that's just the candidate form. What about 10 years later?
Well, let me get...
It would have to be every four years, because you become a candidate when you run again. You file the paperwork once again, so...
Two years into that, four years? I'm sorry.
Well, that's the question that Councilmember Frampton raised.
Mr. Bentley?
I wasn't, I wasn't done.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Mr. Bentley, can you hold, please?
Thank you.
My other thought was, if we took that same form and put it as an option in the residency documents, so when you're going to prove your residency to the council, and you're providing all of those documents, do you provide that signed, or that notarized affidavit again at that point, when you're providing those documents to whatever we decide for 22-5? But could it be in those options of documents? That was a thought I had.
Okay. Any comment, Mr. Carey? No?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, it certainly could be, if that's the consensus of the group. I mean, that's what we're trying to determine here, is what's the consensus moving forward for second reading? What do we want to add to what's already here, or take away from it? So, yeah, that's where...
Because that raises the question of what triggers that request?
And again, is it a single member, or is it four? Which is kind of the core question that we keep coming back to.
Hold on, I have a light, I have a light on here. Hold on. I gotta take him to order. Mr. Bentley?
Well, that was my question. But I'll ask it, since I had my light on. Is it the charter that says a single member can do this without the body doing it?
So that gets back to the question that we posed to the Attorney General, which...
And they didn't answer it.
Correct. So, you know, the law is not exceedingly clear, and so...
I'm fine with...
That was about the subpoena that we had.
Right.
Not about the, because if you read, can you read the charter?
Sure. Yeah, it'll take me a minute to pull it up. I've got it pulled up somewhere here on one of my tabs, but I thought I did. All right, here we go. All right. So which provision are you asking for me to read?
Where the council member can question residency.
"The council shall be the sole judge of the election and qualification of its members, and for such purposes shall have the power to subpoena witnesses and require the production of the evidence. The decision of the council in any case shall be reviewed, subject to review by the courts." Is that what you're talking about?
No, there's a provision, probably before that, it talks about the, where residency can be questioned. Off the top of my head, I don't remember where it was, but I mean, it was...
Well, I read it 100 times, I couldn't tell you either.
Well, if that's, that's where we're at, then I'll go ahead and say the rest of what I had to say, then. Even after he finds the answer, we're still not gonna know what the answer is. I'm okay with an independent person looking at it. My, my, I have two requirements. At the beginning of the process, you have to have four votes to do that. And at the end of the process, you have to have four votes to agree to change, to do anything. And if we have, if we have those two four votes, then I'm fine if someone else does, because I agree, it does put everybody in a bad position, and we don't want to do that. I am okay with, again, doing some clarification of what is a resident. But I'm not personally in favor of one council member being able to direct the will of the council. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Frampton, I have no other lights on. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Rode, did you want to speak?
And just to be clear on, on the point you made, Deputy Mayor Bentley, without question, the charter says, "The final decision is the council." That, that...
That's clear.
That we can't, you know, that one, we can't wordsmith. That one, that one's locked in for us.
Then can we add a thing, since we're adding? Can we just add something that also defines that first term? That it takes four members?
Depends what the charter says.
Well, it sounds like the charter's not sure, or not clear.
Well, so I think what you might be referring to is the remainder of Section 11, and you can tell me if I'm, if this is what you're thinking of. Because it's kind of in the passive voice. So again, it's not exceedingly clear to me, but it says, "A council member accused of violating any of the conditions of Article III, Section 9, obliging the immediate forfeiture of office, may request a public hearing." And so that leaves open the question... forfeiture of office, may request a public hearing. And so that leaves open the question, accused by whom, right? Is it accused by a single member or accused by the, you know, the council itself? And so, again, with it being written in the passive voice, it-
Sort of like the Attorney General's opinion.
Well, so, you know, again, it's, it's not quite as clear as we would love it to be.
My, my question was, can you add clarification to that, like we're doing with the terms of defining what a resident is? Can you add a clarification to, it takes four people to start the process? Or is it?
Well, one, one thought kicked around at one point was, do you, if you go back to 22-5, or 22-4, I'm sorry, hold on. If you go back to 22-5, if you create a two-tiered process to 22-5, and the first tier is a council member requests that the council, that there's a dispute on a council member resident, but have a very low bar for the council to authorize a third-party investigator. So the bar, the bar might be that if, if after they've resubmitted their residency affidavit, they, they don't, one of those items is not present that was when they were elected, you create kind of a two-tiered, so, so that any accusation from one council member about another council member comes to this council, and the first tier is a, is a, is a low threshold to, that the council then has to authorize in a third-party to investigate. And then when that, if that action happens, then that investigation comes to the council to decide. It doesn't totally solve the problem, but it would-
How do you word that?
Oh, on the fly, not very well.
And, and-
But-
I hear you. I hear you, Mr. Bentley. And as a council member, I don't want to make decisions without knowing the facts. And that's the problem of moving forward with something like you're suggesting is, we don't even know the facts and we're making a decision on it. If somebody's making an accusation, shouldn't we know the facts before?
Are we allowed to have a discussion? I don't know, Mayor, how you want to do this.
I don't have any lights on.
Okay, so, so we're allowed to talk a little bit. I'm not, I, I believe I could foresee a situation where an individual council member, for whatever reason, just to stir the pot, could do something that I don't think they should have the power to do as one individual on the council.
I agree. And there's, you know, there's bad actors.
I know, but everything-
Always bad actors. We've seen that time and time again. I'm, I like the low bar idea. I don't know how to get there. I don't care that we, we vote as, you know, four people vote, but how do you get there? That's all I'm-
I believe we don't do anything without the will of the council, and that's four votes in everything that we do.
Yes.
But that's fine. But-
And you might get four votes.
We should know the facts.
Well, but you got to have, you got to have enough probable cause to get four votes.
Probable cause?
Basically. You got to have, you got to convince four people.
Reasonable suspicion, if we want to use legal terms to get there, and then probable cause to take action on it. So-
I want four votes before I agree to investigate another council member. I want the majority of the council to feel that way.
Totally agree with you.
Who presents that to you?
Whoever brings up, I don't, I don't know. That's a different issue. I don't know.
That's the issue that I have.
May I make a comment in here, too?
You're mayor, you can-
This is not our first time here. We did have something similar. It was not with a councilman, but it was with a staff member. And it was brought to council, the facts were brought to council with a perfect timeline and everything laid out, and it was brought to us by the city manager. And all of council discussed it. But at that time, there were a lot of, there was a lot of tension between council members. So because the issue was, was pushed by a single council member and then other members, which is your, to your point, one council member, then other council members went along and the, the facts supported it. But because of that tension between all the council, it was not a 7-0 vote. There were two people that abstained, and I was one of them. And that was simply because of the, of the political environment and the way that it looked to other people who were not part of that four. So I agree with you 100% that it should be someone from the outside that presents this to us, like Whitebird or some other law firm, certainly not our own. We don't want someone who, that we do their, their performance evaluation. Wouldn't want that. And also, to your point, about a time, as far as how long that they would be out of their home, say they should, it should be damaged by a hurricane or something like that, I would think 90 days would be enough. And if it isn't enough and they can come back to council and say, hey, they're, they're just about done. I need another 60 days, and ask for an extension. But the thing is that there are feelings, there are personalities on this council, and it's not just us. We're dealing with something right now. Right now, tonight, we're dealing with the council that made decisions 30 years ago, and we have to deal with it. So that's what we're doing tonight, too. So I want to be really, really careful that we don't put something like this onto, onto a, a future council, because it's clear to us now what we mean, but 30 years from now, it won't be, and then they'll be stuck with this. So how we get to, I don't think it should be one person either, but it should be a general consensus. If we looked at this information that we were giving as to what the qualifying documents are, and we don't get a solid four, that yes, this is fine, he does live here, or she does live here, end of it. If there's anything else, it's a three to two, then we should have outside counsel, then do the investigation, and they present it to us.
Three to two?
As far as the four items that we would be looking at, the four documents, yes, that we would be looking at. If we can't get a general-
That's what Pat didn't want to do. Well, that's what-
Well, that's, if we don't get a general consensus of the different documents, it could be different documents and not accepted to everyone. But if the four documents were acceptable to every, to the four, then that would be fine and everything would be dropped. But if not, then there should be an investigation.
So could we table this until the next meeting?
Yes.
And add this as a topic to our offsite, because I think we're really close. We're down to, how do you get to that first-
Bar.
Bar? And I understand your point that it may be hard to get four votes before you have a chance to gather data. I understand that. I'm not sure how to work through that yet. And, and Mr. Rhodey had one suggestion, but I haven't taken the time. I didn't know how far we're going to go this deep in it tonight. But I think we're much closer. We just, we need to figure it out.
I think it would give Mr. Rhodey an opportunity to figure out how we reach that low bar, too, in the, in the-
Yeah, I do agree that the bar should be lower, but I still want, I don't know, I'm still a four vote, because it's the will of the council. But maybe if you add those other criterias, as bars, as weighted evidence of, you need to really consider this when you vote. But let's discuss it at the offsite, where we can take some time and go through it, if that's fair.
Yeah, there's no urgency to this at all. I mean, I don't think anybody thinks that any of you are not a resident. And so if it takes a couple of months to, you know, tinker with this and get it-
I think we're close. I think we're really close.
We're meeting at the end of the month.
Okay. So I'd like to table this to after that meeting, the first meeting after that meeting.
Does it actually get tabled, or is it just-
However you want to do it. Tell me what to-
Yeah, yeah. I mean, so we're not accepting this on first reading, but we certainly aren't killing it either. So I think we would probably just motion to table it until it's brought forth on first reading again.
That's my motion. I think we're close. I made a motion.
Motion Bentley, second, Frampton. All those in favor of tabling this issue to the first meeting after the, after, after our next retreat signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Motion carries, 7-0. Thank you. We'll wait, we'll wait for you. Yes, this is council reports. Mr. Bentley, you're first.
Yeah, I would just, one quick thing is, Chief, you guys did a really good job on the torch run. So, you know, I did attend that and a few other things. But I did want to mention that that was a nice event and it was for a good cause. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Mr. Gaylord.
Yeah, so just wanted to mention that four of us, four of us went up to Tallahassee this last week with the state legislators, talked about several issues. Ad valorem reductions, CRAs and sovereign immunity were three that came up. And also, as I mentioned in the earlier part of the meeting, the expansion of the Live Local Act also came up. So just wanted to state for the record and for our residents that of the four of us that were, that were in that meeting, several of us did sign papers in opposition to the expansion of the Live Local Act. I thought that might be important to mention, because I know that that is an important topic to a lot of our residents. And just thought a lot of the topics on, on the legislators' minds were very interesting to get their perspective. So really, really grateful for the opportunity to go up there and really enjoyed the company of all the council members that went with.
Thank you. Ms. McGuire.
There we go. So I also went up to Tallahassee last week. It was a, being somebody who's been to Tallahassee many times before, I still learned quite a lot going up on behalf of the city this time, going up with the League of Cities instead of my typical, like, chamber groups. Gave it, gave it a different light than I normally go up and see it, different conversations, different topics. It definitely made, I guess in a sense, it made me see it a little bit differently this year. So I'm thankful that I had that opportunity, was able to go through some of those courses. Let's see. The only other thing is, don't forget this Friday, or not Friday, this Saturday is Trash Bash, 8 to 12, Community Park. See you guys there to pick up trash. And that is my report.
I'll thank you. Mr. Frampton.
I know we kind of mentioned a little bit earlier that we went to the Lagoon House and listened to the governor speak about the grant programs that he was initiating, where they had actually recovered some money that they had declined with the federal government based on some certain issues. And, and they were able to get that money back, what, half a billion dollars, I think, Pat? So we went there. That was, that was interesting to do. And I did have a question for Mr. Rhodey. Where are we at on the mural policy? I know that we, we left it hanging for a year. We're probably six or seven months from that. Where are we at with that? And when's it coming back?
Yeah. Planning Director Fisher and I have talked about the mural a couple of different times. Right now, our planning department has been slammed, and it, it just always seems to fall off. But we will, we will reprioritize and get that back to the top of the list. We just-
Doesn't have to be on the top. We were just-
We've been-
Back within a year.
We've, we've, yeah, we've, we've had a good run from the planning side of things. So apologize.
Is that, are you finished, Mr. Frampton? All right, Ms. Adams.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll echo the thoughts of Legislative Action Days at Tallahassee. Specifically, the Live Local Amendment is HB 943, I believe. And as Mr. Gaylord had said, I believe all four of us that did go did submit paperwork in, in opposition of those. And there were over 50 different people in the audience at that point that was shared from the speaker, who did come to speak on the item. At least while we were in that room, the majority were against. And they spoke very eloquently about how this amendment, which does significantly increase the developers' powers, I'm trying to figure out the nice way to say that, increase the developers' powers to influence development within our cities, basically following the administrative actions of the Live Local Act that's already in place. There were concerns because land that's including land like owned by churches and different pieces that are zoned differently than what the current Live Local Act allows for could be included, should this amendment continue moving forward. That vote did move forward with the full support of that subcommittee. So it's something that I'm sharing to keep our residents informed, because I know many of them, as it was mentioned, do care about that particular act and how it affects West Melbourne. This would be the time, as bills are moving through their subcommittees, before they come forward to all of the legislative body for a decision, that if we have strong feelings in opposition or even in support of, because we did have different pieces of legislation, we did, we did voice support for in terms that would be beneficial to our city, this would be the time to either be emailing our legislators, calling them, whether or not they directly represent West Melbourne. And I say that because the, the subcommittee, which was the, I thought I had written down which subcommittee it was, but the Housing Subcommittee that had seen the amendment for Live Local, did not currently have a representative that directly serves West Melbourne as a voting member of that subcommittee. And so as I was talking with residents about this particular vote that was coming forward, I explained to them, you can still call representatives that don't directly affect our area. Mr. Tremont was the voting member from the subcommittee that's anywhere tied close to Brevard County. He's at the, the very, very north tip of Brevard, and then I think the southern end of Volusia County in terms of his representative area. But he was the closest that we had on that subcommittee. So I'm encouraging people, if you have the time, make the phone call, send the email. All of the subcommittee members are listed on the different websites for the government. So you can find out who represents the different areas, how to get in touch with them. Because while, it really unfortunately surprised me that there were tons of people there from all different cities across Florida in opposition of this amendment, and yet the subcommittee voted for it in full favor. So I, I do think it, it makes a difference. I just don't know how many more calls or emails you have to, what that bar is for them, to be able to, to vote against it if they hear enough of the feedback. But I just wanted to share that for our residents who, who may feel actively engaged in, in the legislature piece right now. I will echo the thoughts, the law enforcement torch run, Chief. It was very well done. I did not run full transparency, but I like to show up and support, and I think you guys did a great job. It was great to see a lot of our local Special Olympics athletes that showed up to participate. And it's my understanding that we'll continue participating with different law enforcement agencies. And we kind of rotate who hosts each year now. So it was nice that West Melbourne was able to host it in the community park. And then just a final note for council, bringing forward my idea of the Youth Advisory Council that I brought up at our last workshop. I did send to Mr. Rhodey a bunch of different examples that I found that I thought were exemplary, not only in their application process, but I took it a step further to look at how cities define what the activities and kind of scope of a youth advisory council are, and what their activities can be, including some that have been recognized at the state level for just positive actions and impact in their community. I thought those might be good examples to, to pick from. So those have been sent to him, and I'm hoping to continue moving that ball forward. So just wanted to loop the rest of council in.
Is that something you can give us some information at the workshop?
Yes.
As we talked about discussing that, the walk, the next workshop, so, I mean, the retreat, whatever you want to call it.
Yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Wolf.
Yes, I had, sorry. I went to the code enforcement meeting, and I think there's going to be an issue that'll probably be coming back to the council on some driveway issues and what they're using on the driveways. And everybody else is using it, but our code says they can't. So anyway, I think there'll be something coming back again on that. And then I went to Parks and Rec, and, and then have to give our police department kudos, because last Saturday night- Because last Saturday night, I went to church, and my dogs are always locked in my laundry room, they've always been there. That's just where they stay when I'm not at home. So I get home, and I see two of my dogs, one's missing. I didn't know, I, I heard scratching, so I thought, oh my gosh, I left him in the house, and he was scratching on the door to get back in to the laundry room, because he heard me. But I opened the door, and he wasn't there. He happened to be wedged behind my dryer. I could not budge the dryer at all, and he's screaming and scratching the dryer vent. And so I ran next door to my neighbor, and he wasn't home. I'm like, do I call 911 because of my little dog? So I did, I called 911. And Officer Matthews came to the rescue from West Melbourne. And he moved my dryer aside like it was featherweight. And he got my dog out of there with no problems at all. And as soon as my next-door neighbor went, and he said, the, the son was there, he said, "Let me know when you get him out." So as I walked outside, and the officer walked back to his car, the fire truck pulled up, and three members got out of there. And so I'm like, oh my gosh, all this because of my little dog. But my dog is safe, and I love Officer Matthews. He just did such a great job for me. So kudos to the West Melbourne Police. Thank you. And I would give, if you could ask him if I could bring him some chocolate-covered potato chips.
The answer is yes.
Okay, thank you. Is that it, Ms. Vult? Okay, thank you. Okay, so I also went to Tallahassee, and it was my first time in Tallahassee, and it was a great experience, great drive up, great drive back, great time there. I was really surprised, and I, I guess I shouldn't have been, but our legislators, when we elect them, most of them have not been on council. They've not been mayors, they've not, maybe not even lived in an HOA, much less been a president of an HOA, or known how HOA works, how budgets and things, they go right from their jobs that they had here right to Tallahassee and start making Live Local decisions for us based on what they think, and they have nothing to base it on. So contacting our, our legislators is really, really important. We had cards to give them that were already pre-printed for us from the Florida League of Cities. They hadn't seen our issues before, and it was just a couple sentences on each one. It was hardly anything more than, you know, this will cause this, this, and this. I mean, just a bare minimum, hardly anything at all. And these people are voting, and it's affecting our entire lively, our lives here. So it is very important that we do let them know in detail what this, what this, these, Live Local and, and other ones, it's not the only one, that there's the sales tax in our local taxes and our CRAs and all of these things that with it. So can we write a letter with any kind of detail on it? Now, whether or not any of them are going to read it, and if there's time, well, I certainly don't know. But Mr. Rhodey can, is there anything that we could do, or Mr. Carey, that would be like a council 101? Please don't do this to the local cities. They just, they just don't know, it's not their fault, they just haven't been here.
Happy to look into that.
All right, even if you do, and you, you write a great letter, I don't even know if they're going to read it, but they just don't know.
An open letter.
In the Florida Today, maybe.
Yeah, there you go.
Needs four votes. No, I'm just kidding. Yeah. Yeah, and we, and we do work with the lobbyists, you know, we've, we've shared our council's direction on Live Local and, but Live Local at the legislature is viewed totally different than Live Local at the council level. I'm sorry, at the, at the state, from, Live Local from the legislative perspective is much different than it is at the practical.
No, we're talking about letting people that have a 50-foot lot put a tiny house on their lot in addition, and rent it as an Airbnb.
In addition to, right.
Yeah.
That's...
Zero lot lines, I mean, this is, this is just awful, horrendous. Whoever came up with this? I, I shouldn't say this, I'm, I'm on YouTube. Anyway, so that, that's my report. Is there anything else for the good of the order before we go to our next meeting?
Yes, we have a closed session, should be very short. So we do have a closed session after this meeting, so if we want to take a five-minute break and...
This meeting is adjourned? Oh, I'm very sorry, management reports, it's, yes, it is.
So, just to add to the Live Local discussion real quick, I'd remind you all that on Mondays, the League has a call-in. One of the things they mentioned was that the House and Senate Live Local bills are very different right now, and that the Senate one, the League doesn't oppose, which means it's probably not terrible, probably not good either, but not terrible. And the, the House one, they do oppose. And, you know, in order for one of them to become law, the other one will have to adopt it. And I don't know what the Senate's position is. I know former President Pasadomo was the chief backer of Live Local, and that body, as you know, originally passed it 40 to 0, and passed the amendment last year 40 to 0. I don't know that they will be interested in letting the House take control of the Live Local from a policy perspective, but that, that's probably the best area to really, you know, attack it if, if you're interested in getting involved, is, you know, encouraging your senators not to adopt the House version. Because there is probably going to be some Live Local amendment that's passed, but it doesn't have to be the House one. And so, you know, if you're comfortable with any of the senators, you know, that, that may be your better avenue than to try to work the House. Because as you noted, you know, the House seems fully supportive of their version, and so it's going to come down to which chamber ultimately prevails in that. So, you know, just my two cents from somebody who used to work for both the Senate and the House, you know, that, that sometimes those issues become which one ultimately wins, and throwing your lot in with that one, so.
Thank you, Mr. Carey, Mr. Rhodey.
Over to you.
All right, so then, all right, now, this message is, I'm sorry, this meeting is adjourned, and we'll take a five-minute break and have our third meeting.